Hope everyone's having a great day. Getting off of my eight o'clock previous meeting and starting this one. Okay, alright, so. I'm going to call the Wayne County Committee of the Whole to Order, Wayne County Commission, Committee of the Whole to Order, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan. Unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Vashon.
Can barely hear you, but here.
Our Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Dobbs.
Here.
Commissioner Hattis.
Present.
Commissioner Colleen.
Right here.
Commissioner Ken Locke.
Present.
Commissioner Kneecik has requested an excuse. Commissioner Morecki.
Here.
Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Here, Travis City, Michigan.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott.
Present.
Commissioner Barga.
Here.
Vice Chair Protem Badum.
Here.
Vice Chair Palomera.
Here.
Chair Bell.
Here.
You have a quorum present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of the minutes from the August thirty first, twenty twenty one, meeting.
To move.
Seven seconds. Okay, moved and supported. Any corrections to the minutes? Open. All in favor say hi.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Anyone wish to abstain?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please. Chair's remarks. Oh, remarks today is just that we have, um, three very important issues on our agenda today. And thank everyone for, um, the meeting that we had last week to conduct some business and for today's meeting.
Open the gate in the garage, hold on.
To conduct some other business before, um, our full board on next week. Thank you. Next item.
Unfinished business. There is none listed. We are moving to page two of the agenda and we're gonna go to item number three. Enterprise Resource Planning ERP update from Chief Financial Officer Huey Newsome and the Procurement Director Aaron Wagner.
Okay, so we have a presentation today on the ERP. Um, for those of you who don't know, they've been reporting to the Government Operations Committee over the last few months. But I thought it was important that the entire, um, commission know where we stand and what the, um, prognosis is going forward with ERP programs. So at this point, I will turn it over to CFO, Mr. Huey Newsome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and, um, to the commissioners, looking forward to, um, walking you through what has happened recently and, um, entertaining your question. So if we can get started, I believe that, um, staff has the presentation. If not, then I can present myself. See.
Through the chair, Huey, I can pull it up as well.
Okay, alright. Let me go ahead and, could you go ahead and pull it up, Aaron? Cause I'm on my iPad. Thank you. Apologize for that.
Okay. Bear with me. Share screen. I think this is it. Uh, can everyone see, uh, the first slide? I'll put it into presentation mode. Excellent.
There we go. I think we're all set. So if we can go to the first, to the next slide. Today, what I'll do is, is kinda give a, um, a summary of where we are. First of all, I wanna level set. Um, you know, while we're doing this project anyway, a lot of you are familiar with ERPs and the ERP projects. Some may not be. So I give kind of a level set of the reason why this is such an important project for, um, not just MMB, the MMB department, but for the entire county as a whole, um, incredibly important for the county. So I do a level set on why this is important for the county. I'll talk about what has, you know, some of the things that have transpired, um, with the project so far, and then talk about what are we going to do to address some of the challenges that we have faced, um, moving forward. So first of all, again, I don't wanna go through every word of this slide here, but, you know, when we started this project back, I believe in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when the concept was first presented, I think you all are familiar that the county's financial and accounting systems, um, financial accounting system, um, or, or ERP, if you will, is J.D. Edwards. J.D. Edwards is, um, uh, an old system, an out-of-date system by, by landslide, by lot. And, um, because of that, there is a strong need to replace it. We also run currently our payroll through, um, PeopleSoft. An older version of PeopleSoft as well. So these are two separate systems through which we run payroll and through which we run accounting. The two, um, first of all, getting the two to talk to each other, work together, is itself a challenge. They're two archaic systems. And on, so on top of all that, the impetus of moving from an, to an integrated system under Oracle, um, was very clear. It's here in front of you. And if these slides have not been made, you know, um, have not been made available to commissioners, we'll make sure that you get these slides. But, you know, here, you'll see some of the key issues that we face in each of these critical functional areas. For instance, for instance, in accounting, it's very difficult considering that we have an old system. It doesn't talk to our payroll system easily. It's very difficult for us to be able to get the audit done on time. This. Oh, alright.
Okay, let's try this again. Thank you all for your patience. Hey Huey, if you want to, um, start where you started.
If we can go back to slide, I think three is where we left off.
Okay.
Excellent. Um, so, so what we had just talked about before our rude interruption was the justification for doing this, right? We've got archaic systems, you know, deliverables coming out of MMB and other functional areas are, um, very slow. Like this year, we filed the, the county financial annual audit the day that it was due, which we'd never like to do, no cushion. Um, and so that was the impetus for us going through and doing an ERP upgrade, right? So what I'm show, what we're showing here now is what the phases of the project were, who the players of the project were, and what we had, you know, what we had originally planned in terms of go live. So again, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say this high level for those that don't live ERP and G, you know, general ledger and payroll, you know, journal entries day by day by day like we do. But, you know, what we wanted to do with the project, we want, instead of doing everything all at once, the original plan was to do the project in four phases. The first phase was because the Treasurer's Office had a similar, um, a similar situation with their cash management pro, um, tool, which at the time was Res IQ. We focused on going live first with a solution for cash management in the Treasurer's Office. So before we even went, before we even got into the Oracle, um, implementation countywide, we first wanted to start with the Treasurer's Cash Management System as the, as the initial part of the project. That was SIMPRO, as you see in that bullet there. For SIMPRO was to go live, then we phased in the Oracle modules. So Phase One A, HCM Phase One A, would replace PeopleSoft for payroll, right? So payroll, time entry, um, human capital management. So human capital management Phase One A was to go first and was originally supposed to go live, um, December of, of twenty nineteen, and that kept getting pushed back. The next wave, if you will, was going to be the heart of the ERP system, the core central accounting system, which is the ERP. That also includes procurement, um, that also includes invoicing account, uh, you know, AP, accounts payable, several other modules, but that in itself was the heart of that. You see, you see there also EPM, which is in a, in a enterprise, um, planning, planning management or enterprise planning module. That particular one was the heart of what we were going to be doing for, um, for budget. The budget forecasting tool is what EPM is supposed to be. I think, Aaron, were you saying something? Without, heard, heard an interruption. Um, but that's, those two were supposed to go next, in like the next wave. And finally, HCM Phase Four, which I kinda called the, the icing on the cake for HCM, the core HCM is the payroll system, um, and the benefits management portion of, of human capital management. The icing on the cake for human capital management is supposed to be recruiting, talent development, learning development. And so bringing in that last wave was supposed to help PHR, um, add functionality within Oracle to manage tra, to do training, management, to help with recruiting, to help with, um, learning and to learn, with learning, professional development. Right? So you see how the phases would have worked. The firms that were helping us with this in the original plan, Mad Dog, I think you all are familiar with Loretta Roundtree. Loretta Roundtree, through a contract with Mad Dog, an organization called Mad Dog, was a project director. The central PMO, um, was supposed to consist of her along with an organization called DCG. So DCG was supposed to support her and they were going, they were part of the, um, what's called the Program Management Office. The central, kind of the drum major for the entire project, right? They handle the administration, they handle the budget, they make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, everybody has the resources that they're supposed to have. Cherry Road, I believe many are familiar with a number of amendments and contracts have come through Cherry Road, um, was, was what we call the implementer. They're the ones that are supposed to configure the tool to make it work specific for Wayne County, supposed to work with each functional area, you know, my team in MMB, uh, PHR, all the different departments to talk and to work with them to figure out exactly what the specific needs in each area are for, um, for Oracle. And then finally Pierce Monroe, um, was responsible for Staff Og, right? And just so everybody understands, doing an ERP implementation is a heavy lift on staff. You all know that pretty much every single depart, every department within every elected office in the county is, um, understaffed with several vacancies. So Pierce Monroe was to come in and provide staff augmentation to free up people in key functional areas such as MMB, PHR, do it to come in and allow people to have time to focus on the project. They also were supposed to focus on what we call business process consulting. One of the key things, we'll talk about this a little bit, a little bit in detail later. One of the key things with, with a successful ERP implementation is for someone that understands each of those functional areas. Someone that understands budgeting, somebody who understands, um, um, central accounting or procurement to come in on the consulting side and work with someone on the biz, on, within the organization to sit down and say, how is, how, this is how I suggest or recommend this work, what you're, you do your, your normal duties once you get into the system. Ideally, you're not doing the same thing, old processes in a new system. Ideally, you're doing things better in a new system. The implementer is focused on the technical configuration and the business process consulting people are focused on those business improvements so that you can fully take advantage of the multimillion dollar system. So that's, that was Pierce Monroe's role. Unfortunately, as of today, or as the, as of, um, the creation of this, of this, um, presentation, none of the modules that you see in bold under that first bullet are live except for SIMPRO. Again, SIMPRO is not Oracle. Is, is from another organization. Our first goal was to get that live, supposed to be fairly simple, and then we were supposed to bring in the phases for, unfortunately, none of the Oracle modules are, um, are live today. Let's talk about what hap, let's talk about, a little bit more about the project, what happened, and then what we plan to do. So again, this is a graphical representation, and again, I'll remind you that you have this, don't already have it. You will have it, um, for, you know, for reference later. This is a graphical representation of who's doing what in the original project organization and what those roles look like. So you see the PMO like I described in the middle with Loretta Roundtree and Mad Dog at the top, DCG as support, Business Process Consulting to your left with Chris Monroe, right, the implementer, uh, Cherry Road Technology. All of them are supporting Wayne County, um, employees, um, and Wayne County, um, employees are responsible for confirming requirements, um, margin testing, saying that this is gonna work for, for our particular functional areas, et cetera. Okay? So let's go to the next slide. Again, this is the timeline, um, this is the timeline as of the end of calendar twenty nineteen. So, um, you'll see that, you know, when we set, set up this timeline back at, towards the end of twenty nineteen, we said we'd had everything done by mid twenty twenty one. See to the right, mid twenty twenty one, June twenty twenty one. Unfortunately, the lanes that are supposed to be complete, Oracle Phase One A, which is grayed out, Phase Three, Phase One B, Phase Four, all those are incomplete. None of those are complete today. The only thing that is complete is SIMPRO, which again is not Oracle, right? It was supposed to be, again, a quick, a quick hit, if you will, to fix some things in the Treasurer's Office in terms of their technology so that it could talk to Oracle and we could take better advantage of Oracle. Okay? So let's go to the next slide. Where's the, how about the money? What's going on with the money? So the original project, um, plan, the original project plan had us spending about thirty one million dollars. You can see to date, the spend to date is roughly about sixteen million dollars through July twenty twenty one. You'll see at the bottom, I know this came up during the budget presentations, you see at the bottom that, um, Cherry Road got the bulk of that, um, sixteen million, seven point four. And then after that, this number's gonna probably balloon to right about ten, um, based on the fact that there's still some work that Cherry Road has done and an amendment that is going to be fully paid down. Um, so this number's gonna be right at ten when we're, when we're done with, when we're done with Cherry Road. This is, so let's go to the next slide, please. So what went wrong? Right? We, again, we, nothing has gone, and one thing I do wanna make sure is very clear to everybody. Um, one thing I wanna make sure that's clear to everybody, I wanna make sure that, um, um, let me, let me just, um, you know, remind everybody that ERPs are, are tough. The very, the difficult projects. City of Detroit had their own challenges. Um, and in fact, city, you see, you saw the previous slide, City of Detroit, um, ended up implementing their ERP without payroll, um, right at fifty million dollars. And we were taught, we were advised that we could get it done for thirty one million dollars with payroll. And so part of the problem, I think I'm kinda shooting ahead to number two. I think part of the problem is that we didn't scope, we didn't really understand the complexity, um, through our consultants and our advisors of what this would look like, right? You've got multiple elected official, multiple elected officials with their own offices. You also have the staffing challenges that we have. You have a one, you, you've got one point seven billion dollars flowing through the county. Right? So we are a complex organization. We have, if I remember correctly, over forty appropriated funds, right? So this level of complexity is on the level of, of City of Detroit, even their budget's bigger. We thought we can do it for thirty one million with payroll. They're doing, they ended up doing it for fifty million without payroll. So that, I think that's very important to understand. And, you know, we also, when we looked at experts to come in and help us, we also didn't have the right level of experience, right? So we had a pro, a program director who had worked in, you know, deep, who had worked for DPS, DPSD or Deepport, Detroit Public School District on their ERP implementation. However, again, I think the school district isn't quite as complicated as what we have in Wayne County. It's a, I would say, a, a step, you know, on a whole different plane in terms of complexity, right? And so Cherry Road, same, similar situation. So instead of us coming, having someone coming in with this level of experience, we had to learn it on our own, right? So that's number one. Number two, well, that's really number two. Let me go back to number one. You know, we have, you've heard this before. We have resource constraints throughout the departments. Um, we have resource constraints throughout departments. Do it. PHR and obviously MMB are gonna be the critical functional areas or critical departments for this type of implementation with the main, you know, main customers and main support for this, for an ERP. Um, we still struggle to hire personnel. You know, our, you know, our staffing challenges, you've heard it a number of times. And the staff augmentation up to this point had not been ample to get us where we needed to go. And then thirdly, and part of this is the fact that, you know, we haven't come, we haven't, we haven't reported to GOVOPS in some time. Um, you know, they're, where are the lines of accountability, right? It's gonna be the project team plus consultants, Wayne County employees, project team, the consultants working on this. You've got your executive sponsor at the top, you've got the CEO and commission above the, above the, the executive sponsor. And the reporting should go up and then, you know, the tough questions should go up, um, is often, is quite often on a regular basis. You know, and we, I'm gonna be honest, we have not presented, um, to GOVOPS, um, in some time in terms of, um, in terms of project status. So without having that clear line of, um, report out to the, to key players such as the CEO or to commission, um, that also hampered our, our ability to have success. Okay? So we can go to the next slide. So what are we gonna, so what are we gonna do about it? So one thing that we want, that we did do is make it very clear, um, you know, what that, what the, what that line of accountability looks like. Right? So I've been named as the lead, you know, I think when I first joined the county, I was the lead and it transitioned and it transitioned back to me, but now I'm the lead, uh, for the project and, you know, I'm looking forward to, you know, being held accountable. I'm probably gonna regret saying that, but I'm looking forward to being held accountable, you know, with regular, regular reports out to the CEO or, and also to you all within commission, through the GOVOPS account. Um, and those decisions can be made later. So that's number one. That lot, that, those accountability lines have to be very clear, very structured, and there can't be a lot of changing of those. Um, it has to be consistency there. Next, you know, I think the PMO has got to be restructured to increase effectiveness. This is a very important point with projects of this size. You, you have to have a PMO, its own charter, its own structure, it must kinda, you know, have its own, it needs, it's foundational, right? You need to make sure that the budget lives somewhere, is accessible to, you know, to, the project budget is accessible to the key players, right? At a moment's notice, I can understand where I am, um, with, you know, with project speed. Same thing with the, with the project timeline, the project plan. Those things need to not just be on an Excel, you know, in Excel somewhere. It needs to be readily accessible, you need to be looking at on a regular basis, et cetera. Solid PMOs of program management offices, um, have that capability. This is something we're very focused on, making sure that the PMO has the right structure, has the right cadence, has the right, um, the right tools to be effective. Okay? Third, I think, you know, this is, this has been out there for some time. Um, and, you know, now we're formally informing, um, you all as commissioners that this has happened. You know, Cherry Road Technologies failed to implement any Oracle modules, like I've mentioned before. When you, when you miss milestones, maybe you get a break once or twice, but if you miss multiple milestones, then because of that, you know, we, we have to decide if we're gonna fish or cut bait. And before we continue to spend money with that, with our previous implementer, we decided to cut bait. Now, the way it was done was that we reached a, you know, a mutually agreed upon separation. I'll talk about that in a minute. Um, but now the key thing is, okay, what are we going to do to assess where the project is? And then quote for the, you know, quote for the effort needed to complete the project. Everything I'm telling you is going to be from, is gonna be from, you know, the vantage point of the CFO, right? We still need to have, I would say, a lower level expert opinion on exactly what is gonna, what's gonna be needed to close the gap between where we are, where we need to be in terms of staff capability, in terms, in terms of, um, expertise, in terms of outside consulting. So those things, you know, those lower level details need to be filled out to be an assessment. And then from there, we quote for that effort needed to complete the project. So that's number three. Finally, number four. We know, and, you know, I'm not gonna come to you, tell the, tell the CEO the same thing, I'm not gonna come to you to say, woe is us, we can't get anything done because we can't hire anybody. Oh, well, shucks. That's not the way this works. Our, our goal now is instead, instead of coming with excuses, because it is, it's true. We, we struggle to fill vacancies and you've, you, everybody on this, on this call understands that. For now, though, instead of us, you know, saying we can't get this done, we have to get this done for the future of the county. So because of that, you know, we want to really focus in, you know, as kind of a tail off from, from number three, segue to number four. What are the key things that we can do in terms of staff augmentation? Not just bringing a body in the field, to feel, you know, to temporarily fill a position that's vacated for some reason, but making sure that that body, um, that that feeling has the right level of expertise, not just to do the day-to-day work. It's either to do the day-to-day work to free up an employee or to do the, um, you know, to actually help us think through how this is gonna work, partnering with our consultants. Think through how we should be doing this better. Someone that has done payroll ERP implementation somewhere, bring that person in, bring them in as staff to work with the consultants, um, to make sure that we're designing this product, the business processes properly. So that's number four, and that will tell from the assessment. Okay? So let's go to the next slide, please. Alright, so in more detail, and this is more of a timeline slide of what's going on with the implementer. So I said, first, we mutually agree with Cherry Road that that contract's gonna end. That took place, we, um, stopped, they, they stopped their work on July twenty sixth. We just signed the mutually agreeable termination letter, um, last week. So we have until, you know, outside of invoices that still need to be sent and paid, our relationship with Cherry, with Cherry Road is, um, is no more. So now, you know, we're looking forward to working with Oracle, Oracle directly on an assessment. You know, again, I'm giving you high level. We need somebody with that expertise that's done these before to give us a lower level detailed analysis specific to Wayne County or what needs to happen. We expect that, you know, say September to December, our goal is to get that started at the beginning of October, slipped a little bit, um, and have that go through, through the, um, end of the year. Um, the cost of that assessment is already built into our, our up-to-date budget. We're gonna utilize some of the savings from being able to walk away from the Cherry Road agreement to pay for this assessment. And then engage Oracle as, as our implementer, right? Um, and of course, this will go through the procure, the normal procurement process. It will come in front of you at the appropriate time. But if this, if we can get the assessment done by the end of the year, you know, time is of the essence for this project. It's not just a matter of money, but it's also a matter of time because we need to get off of J.D. Edwards and off of PeopleSoft very quickly. So we want to get things going as quickly as we can, targeting January twenty twenty two. And we wanna, you know, engage Oracle as implementer, um, through, you know, through the appropriate procurement process. We'll work that out when we get to that point. But the most important thing is get the assessment done. Make sure that, you know, when we go, make sure that what, when we sign contracts for the new implementer, that we have in incorporated all the lessons learned that we had, that we've gotten from the previous three to four years that we've been working on this project. Okay, so the next slide. So, um, you know, going forward again, this, this box looks kinda the same. You see at the very top, I'm the executive sponsor, um, but here, this is, you know, what, what's different here is what do we recommend? You know, the most important thing, again, to the right, you see that, you know, we're quoting, we're, we're gonna go through the assessment, quote, That business, we're also gonna look separately at the P M O. One thing that's important, I think that, you know, for, for those, there are though, there might be some that have um worked. Or so watched or monitored projects like this. Sometimes you have an implementer that will bring their own P M O capabilities into the project. It's, you know, one of the potential outcomes of the assessment is that, you know, Oracle can, you know. Be willing to do the work and, and provide their own people. Um, we don't know if that's going to be the case or not, we are assuming that's not gonna be the case. And we'll go forward with a separate P M O, which I think is, is advantageous to us. Because then you have some accountability if you separate those two boxes as opposed to having those two, those two together. You have a P M O that can, that could quote unquote, watch the implementer, hold the implementer accountable. And support the executive sponsors and executive leadership team on that front, okay? So we can go to the next slide. So um, one thing is, is not really clear, you know, what the um. It's not really clear what the new cost is gonna be, right? We, we don't, we won't know until we get the, you know, until we get the quotes out. There is a high level estimate that's floating around. Now, it costs an additional twenty six million with the um, with the five point six million, that's excluding the five point six million dollars savings. You know, I can, I can answer questions on what, on the breakdown of that. But again, that's not going to be firm until we get through with the assessment and get a um. And go out to bid or get a contract in here, get some quotes in here for what the um new implementation would look like. As well as the P M O and the um, and the business process consulting side. Now, one thing to note, again, the lion's share of that's going to be the implementer, just like Chair Road was lion's share of the project budget. The previous project budget, we expect that Oracle Consulting Services or whoever will be the implementer would um. Would also be the lion's share of the new cost, okay? So with that, I will pause. And, yeah, I will, I will entertain questions, I guess, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you so much, Huey, that was a lot of information, but um did a good job uh explaining. Uh, where we were, how we got to where we are and what the um future is to bring with this project. Um, I have questions from commissioners, the firsthand I saw was a Commissioner Kenlock, go ahead.
Yes, okay, so looking at that last uh slide that you put up, um, it said Cherry Road um total project. Uh, seven million dollars, uh, is that the total amount of money that Cherry Road has received uh to date? Um, and are there any more payouts um to Cherry Roads? And my main question is, um, my main question is. What did Cherry Road do for the seven million dollars? I'm sure they did some work. Um, but now we're having to sever ties, we're having to reassess um, um, this project. To see exactly where we're standing, and then we're going to have to readjust some of these numbers. Putting Oracle as the uh combined um P M O. Um, but my, 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 my concern is, is that we absolutely need to have someone overseeing the implementer. And um, and, and how we go about selecting that firm. Uh, because we, you know, selected Cherry Road. Who's present, who was responsible for um. Uh, much of the lion's share is relates to responsibility of bringing in uh this particular project. Um, into uh existence. Um, everyone knew, everyone knew around here. Uh, the debacle that the PeopleSoft um, uh, experience. Uh, that was um, dealt upon the city of Detroit, the millions of dollars that they spent. And I do believe that more care and more conversations should have um absolutely been made. Um, with both uh the city of Detroit, as far as their experience, um, and um, as it relates to the E R P. Uh, implementation as well as, let me just tell you, I was on the Board of Education. Um, when they also had issues with um, uh, with their whole change, I I T uh changeover as well. So I'm, I'm just very, very concerned and would uh absolutely be watching. Um, the selection process um in um, in regards to this. And particularly when you talk about the P M O office of recommendation, I guess at some future point. We, you know, this is my first time hearing about this, I think, but I know there's certain part, I'm saying in detail, because I know there's certain parts of this. Where contracts did come before the commission, Pierce Moro, I remember seeing that contract. But I didn't understand the underlying, uh, underlying um, uh, uh, issues that was. Um, that would, that we're now dealing with, and all I'm asking, Madam Chair, I'll finish, is that we absolutely be kept in the loop. On a regular and timely basis moving forward, and I like some of the things that you're saying that you're gonna do as far as. Uh, making this information available more broader. Um, but this here, uh, I do not want us, at the end of the day, to be having to have this conversation again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Mr. Newsom?
Yeah, if Madam Chair threw you to, to Commissioner Kenlock, uh, you got a lot of good points. Um, I'm gonna start with the easiest one first, and then I'm gonna work my way through. Um, so you, that, that number that you see is gonna grow, go up, I think it's gonna go, like, off the top of my head, it's gonna be about nine point four, nine point six million. Somewhere in there, so it's gonna be just south of ten for Cherry Road. The problem is, is that this number is what's been paid out through um, through July. And there's still work that needs to be done in that reconcile, that reconciliation. Um, of all work partially or completely done, um, that's part of that mutual agreeable, um, mutual agreeable separation, if you will. So that's, that's the answer to that question. Could you go back one slide? Cause the actual, what, what Commissioner Kenlock was saying, I think it's gonna go back, uh, yes, that's the one, that's the one. So this is something that I'm pretty passionate about, and you, you said it correctly. So the way I see an E R P, right, you got the implementer, let's, you know, the previous implementer you to, see to the right. Was Chair Road, I can't remember who did the implementation for the city of Detroit. But I think that, you know, sometimes that middle box is underestimated. If the middle bo, box works correctly, then you have the, you, you, it gives. It's very difficult for, you know, someone like me, you've got Aaron Wagner, who's Pyramid Director on the team. You've got the Deputy C F O who's on leadership team, you've got um, Neve Mabasic from, from Do It that's on the team as well. Um, as well as people that are, you know, the executive office, um, and the C E O. So we have our day to day jobs, and we really need help to have visibility into the day to day. That, that yellow box is kind of the, kind of the line between the border between the people that are fully dedicated. To the project on a day to day basis, that drive it to um success. And the people that are still responsible for it, but have a million other things to do, right? So I firmly believe what you said, that, you know, a lot of people will tell you that the implementer is the most important. And they're the ones that do so much of the work. But if you have a good solid P M O to give you that level of visibility, this is important. That's also in, fully invested and connected to leadership of the county. Then that, you, now you cross that line, you know, properly. So that's why the P M O is so important. And so you heard me talk, you know, talk about putting out the quote, but you also talked, heard me talk about, you know, making sure that there, the tools are right. Making sure that the visibility and transparency is right, making sure that we have the ability to hold, that through the P M O to hold the other. Um, boxes accountable, right? So I agree with you um strongly on that front. And, you know, as of right now, Mad Dog's um contract elapsed, it lapsed um two weeks ago. And so currently D C G, and we, we will come to you with the recommendation probably in our next presentation. But we, you know, what do we do with the D C G contract? Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, it does, that one um ends. I think the first quarter of twenty twenty two, the first quarter of calendar twenty twenty two. So do we leave them in for continuity purposes? We wanted to make sure that there was someone here that knew where all the artifacts were and knew, you know, the latest in the project budget. So we had left them in for project, for accountability. But as we go through the, the, kind of the vision here, Commissioner, is that, okay. Let, let's do the assessment, let's take, let's take a breather, let's take these months, we're going into the holiday, we're ramping up for the county audit. Let's take a breather, let's really deep, do a deep uh kind of analysis of what went wrong and what we can utilize going forward. And come out strong in January. In that process, while that, while that assessment's being done. You know, we do want to focus on designing the P M O, right? So all the things I just put, everything I just, you know, put in, put, you know, put some wording to, you're gonna have details around it. As part of that foundational restructuring, if you will, and I think that, that to me is gonna be uber critical for this project's success. So I, I strongly agree with you. And one thing you also mentioned with the city of Detroit, you know, we have some, we have informal. Have informal relationships with, with our friends over in the offices, Office of the C F O. Now, there are a lot of lessons learned, um, I personally know. For the Deputy CFOs, Matthew Dubay was, was part of a group, um, is part of a group, I should say. Um, and we still, as you can see on the project budget, still involved with the, with the, with the project as a consultant now. And so, um, you know, with, through that, through that relationship. Our goal is to make sure we don't relearn the lessons that the city learned. So I, I strongly agree with you on that too, we definitely wanna make sure that, you know, we're, that we don't. You know, we don't make the mis, the same mistakes as our friends across the street made, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm glad, I guess, one positive thing is to hear that this is finally. Uh, we're, the commission is finally getting a, a report, I thank the Chair for having this on the agenda today. This is the greatest debacle, I think I've seen him since I've been on, since I've been on the commission. Uh, it is, it is unbelievable that we would lose the kind of dollars we're losing because of a failed project like this. Uh, and we've been told for the last, what, four or five years? That the uh, the project is proceeding, and it was only, the first thing I heard about it. Was at the Ways and Means Budget Meeting, when uh, Mr. Newsom uh mentioned it. Uh, that we had a, we had a major problem uh, and with Cherry Road. And I'm, I would like to ask, and I know our Auditor General is probably on the line. And the Chair of the Audit Committee. I'd like to see them do a deep dive into this to see what happened, what, who is responsible, what we lost. Uh, the exact dollars and independent accounting of that. Uh, this is, this is huge, uh, that we're losing this kind of money. And, and we're still paying money out to Cherry Road in a settlement agreement. I, I, I understand that something like that might be necessary. But to continue paying a company that failed on every account and every portion of this project. Uh, to put anything forth that works, and, and I, I just think that it's. I, I don't know, Huey, can you tell us, uh, was the, uh, was our legal staff or corp counsel? Directly involved in negotiations, or how was that handled?
Um, I will say that Corp Counsel was included in our conversations on how to properly. You know, I'll say go our, quote unquote, go our separate ways.
Okay, so am I correct, did I pick up that it's gonna cost us another nine to ten million dollars?
No, 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 not another nine, total of, of, somewhere between nine and ten, not, not another, no.
I thought I saw on one of the slides, it was about ten, ten and a half or ten point five.
Could you go to the next to last slide, go down one? So see, so you see the seven point three uh eight million for Chair Road and total project?
Right.
So what I'm doing is I'm adding one point seven um plus, and plus maybe another one or two invoices that we're not sure where they're gonna land. To get to roughly um nine four nine six, total, total spin for them.
So do we know, do we know exactly what they completed, uh, that we're paying? I, I just find it inconceivable that we're paying them, and we, does it sound like we know exactly what they've got that, but we'll even. Show any results for the county.
I don't want, so let's talk, if you go back, go back one, two, three slides. Uh, go back another one. One more, one more. One more, sorry, one more, there, okay, so. So if you look to what they are supposed to deliver, this is high, high level, right? So I'm just gonna wing it instead. You think about what an implementer is gonna do, the implementer is going to work with um. He's gonna work with the consultants, the other consultants, as well as staff. To sit down and understand business requirements, is a needs analysis, right? I need the system to provide me a report, so I can do budget to actuals, so I can, um, you know, go and deliver my projections to commission, right? So, so that report is a, is a business requirement. So we're gonna design the reports, then in certain situations, I'm, there might be some sort of a connection between. Um, two modules to build that report out, to make that report work, right? So there's, that's an interface. So that, the coding of that interface or designing that interface would also be a requirement. I've got to test the interface, I gotta write, I gotta code it out, and I've got to test the interface. So then the test script um for that testing is also part of what they would deliver. The results of that test, once I actually, you know, code it out, would also be um, would also be considered as well. So, so what I'm trying to do is just give you an idea. Give you an idea at a high level of what that looks like. But then, you know, when you change implementers, all that design, all the, you know, all those requirements, all the design. Uh, all those test scripts, if you will, may, the next guy might, just like if I'm designing a building. The next guy might say, I don't, I can use some of your blueprints, I'm not gonna use any of your blueprints, whatever. And so that's the question that the assessment's gonna answer, so it's very difficult for me to come and say, okay, we wasted that money, or we can, or that money. You know, none of that money was wasted or somewhere in between, I believe it's gonna be somewhere in between, I just don't know where we're gonna land.
Uh, so we've, we've spent then with Cherry Road total, uh, you said nine point four to maybe ten and a half million?
I don't think it's gonna go north of ten, to be honest, I don't think it's gonna go north of ten.
And the total project was supposed to be uh around thirty one million?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and by the time it's over, with the additional money that's gonna be needed, now it's gonna be more than double that?
It's, it's gonna be all in, we're, we're saying if you add the twenty six to the thirty one, you could get to fifty seven, so it's not gonna be double.
Okay, and we're going to be looking at, instead of an implementation date of this year, which was originally. Uh, the implementation date and the, basically to flip the switch, uh, we're looking at how many more years?
Um, it's difficult to say without going through the assessment. I, my, my hope, my hope is that we're done at the end of calendar year twenty three. But I, again, I wanna be, I'm, I'm, wanna caveat and preface that. But I wanna be, I really want us to, worst case scenario, end of calendar year twenty three.
Yeah, I just, I, I can't believe how we, uh, it came out, and I, and I'm not blaming you. Um, I'm not blaming you at all, because you, you've only been there a short time. Uh, and it was things that were already in play, are starting, the wheels were turning already before you arrived. Uh, you know, there's, and it's, and it's not just about assessing and blaming someone. But this is, you know, millions of tax dollars, millions. And this is just uh inexcusable that it, that it got this far, that we were losing the smell of money. Uh, so I'll, I'll, I'll stop at that, uh, and, cause I know, uh, other commissioners probably have some questions too. But I, I, like I said, I would like to ask and uh, in, if I'm to, uh, the Chair of the Audit Committee to. For us to have an independent accounting of what happened, how much money has been spent, wasted. Uh, at this point, uh, and, and what we're gonna do to recover uh from this. Last question for you, Huey, if I could, uh, or Mr. Newsom, if you could tell us. When do you expect to have a number of, a firm number of what it's going to cost and where the money's going to be coming from?
Um, I would say my, my hope is, my target is end of January, maybe sometime in February, but that quarter. Um, second quarter of the fiscal year is where I think we can, we, we would have everything um firmed up. And then, and that obviously, a very well ran assessment, the outcome. The outcome of that assessment will help us, give us, will help give us the tools. Necessary for us to get a firm number of what it, what we think it's gonna cost to get this thing fixed.
And we don't know at this time where the money's coming from.
Once, we will present ideas on sources of funding. Once we understand the funding need.
All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Maricki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Huey, did you mention, I might have missed it, how much this, the assessment with Oracle is gonna cost?
I didn't mention it, all in, the first, first, we will start with 150, there's, I think. And Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, there are additional assessments that we might take on. To get in lower level detail, it could be up to 600. But right now, we're gonna start, I think at 140, 500, 400, 45,000.
That, that's correct Huey, they're, they're gonna take a look at HCM, they're gonna look at the financials and work that's been done with that. In addition to, and this is a big portion of it, the data conversion on pulling the data from PeopleSoft. And JD Edwards and getting it into, into the new system.
Okay, so I saw that Matthew Dubai has been a consultant for the last three years, it looks like. Exactly, exactly, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, since, since he left, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, and through you, Madam Chair, to the Commissioner. Since he left, I apologize if that wasn't clear in the document.
Okay, so exactly what was he consulting with? What was he doing and did he find these problems going on as a consultant? Or exactly what was his role in?
Matthew, Matthew's role was very specific, his number one deliverable was to recommend a new chart of accounts. For, you know, for, you know, for the, for us as we, you know, go forward into the new system. That was his number one role, he had other, you know, just advisory for, you know, from a, from a central accounting standpoint, from an accounting standpoint. For the system, but I think if I remember correctly, his primary deliverable was a recommendation on the chart of accounts.
And is he still going to be a consultant?
He was, he's gonna be involved with the project on, going forward, that's correct, he's in the budget.
Okay, so you were talking about the Administration Council being involved. In this settlement, was our Commission Council part of that? Was she, were, were they consulted with any of this? With the settlement?
I don't think so, but I do have to remind Commissioners that, that the Commission staff is represented in the Steering Committee. Of, for the ERV.
Okay, will the settlement be given to the Commission for approval?
I, I wanna make, be clear that there isn't, this isn't a settlement. You know, we agreed that we were gonna go our separate ways through the termination language in the contract. But this isn't, this isn't an agreed upon settlement, so I'm gonna be very careful. With, you know, we're utilizing the wording of the contract. That was already agreed upon and approved by Commission. In utilizing that as a mechanism to separate, cease and desist, if you will, so I wanna be very careful that we don't use the word settlement.
Okay, all right, fair enough, then I guess, will we see? Any of this, this wording that goes on? Not the settlement, but whatever you guys are gonna call it.
Not, we haven't discussed that as administration. Let me sit, get with corp counsel and figure out the right, right way to make what's necessary visible, if I may.
Okay, so you mentioned that we don't wanna do the same, have the same mistakes that happened in Detroit. I don't know what happened in Detroit, but how could it possibly be any worse than what happened here?
Well, I, I guess you, that's, that's, you know, I wouldn't, I don't know if I would compare one of the other. I would say that, you know, obviously. We want to utilize lessons learned across the street as well as our own, which is why the assessment is so important. But, I mean, you know, might be, there might be things that we didn't experience that they experienced. You know, I don't wanna get into the level of degree here, but there might be things that we experienced that they didn't experience and vice versa. So I like to, you know, take lessons learned from both, from both camps.
Okay, and you know, it's, it's been an ongoing concern with the Commissioners about our current system, of course. And we've lucked out that nothing has really failed with this. So now we have three more years of just hanging on, and what if something fails with our current system? And again, I, I, just like Commissioner Anderson said, this isn't, you know, this isn't directed to you, you, you came into this mess. But what kind of thought process is going on? Are we just like praying that this current system is gonna hold on for another, what, two years, two and a half years? As we fix all this?
I'll put it this way, there are contingency plans, they're not great. But there are contingency plans that, you know, do it has in place to help us in case. Something, you know, something goes wrong. They're not, like I said, they're not great, and they might be rather expensive, but I will say that, you know. We, you know, getting payroll out. I think we have a mechanism to get payroll, payroll out if something bad happens with PeopleSoft. Same with, you know, same with the audit, same with being able to record transactions in the GL. But yes, I. I will say that we, we've had conversations on what that looks like.
Okay, that's all I have right now, Madam Chair, thank you, thank you for answering.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Maricki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Newsom, I guess what bothers me most about this is that we now have to continue to pay. Cherry Road. Because you said there's additional 2, 2 million. Is that correct, that we will be paying out?
Roughly, yes, that's correct.
Is there, or has there been thoughts around how we can avoid? Paying that, have we discussed that at all?
Is, we've discussed it in administration, the challenge that we have, you know, the challenge that we have is. You know, if we were to, if we were to, you know, try to pursue not paying that or worse yet. Trying to recoup some of the 7.3 that we have already paid. Then we get, you know, we find ourselves getting mired into potential litigation. You know, that, that could last months, probably years. As, as we were just saying before with, with the Commissioner. If we, if that were to happen, we get bogged down, we have money encumbered. And then we can't move forward, then the project itself gets kinda stuck in the quicksand. And so that was the fear. And we not only, you know, obviously we wanna be as careful as we can with taxpayer money. But we also have the challenge of having to get this project done as soon as possible. And so with that being said. You know, we recommend, you know, our approach was instead of, you know, looking to pursue. You know, million, you know, the one, maybe a million, two million that we think we're eligible for, I think we are. The problem of, you know, being bogged down in litigation for months and years. Where this project still needs to be completed. It made more sense to us to go forward as quickly as possible, cease and desist with Cherry Road. Let us go both our separate ways and us find, you know, good part, good effective partners to get this project finished.
However, if we're going our separate ways. What's the difference if we go our separate ways now versus? Paying them an additional 2 million and then going our separate ways?
Well, I, I just don't wanna pay them the additional 2 million. So, you know, that's really the thought process, you know. We go our separate ways now, then, you know, that's, that means we can get the assessment done more quickly. We can get the, you know, we can get a, an implementer in here more quickly. You know, time is of the essence because of the system that we, because of the system that we have. That was the thought process, and I'm hoping I'm answering your question, maybe if I'm not, maybe you can re-ask it.
You know what? Can, is, is there a staff attorney on, Felicia? Are you Attorney Johnson? Can you weigh in on this and what, what your thoughts are?
Good morning, through, through the Chair. So I don't have a lot of specific information, I have not been included. So I don't have enough information to offer too many opinions. I will say that if there is a settlement, I haven't seen it. There is a resolution that authorizes certain settlements, I'm not sure if this would fall under it. I believe the threshold is $20,000 that the Administration can do, anything above that would require this body's approval. Again, haven't seen that document, if it exists. As far as termination, I think everyone, every Commissioner knows it. It's my opinion that the CEO can't uterally terminate. So something should be coming to this body on some level or another. But again, haven't seen it and don't know exactly what has occurred because I haven't been in the loop per se.
Okay, Mr. Newsom, I, I thought you indicated earlier that we did have a Commission Attorney? Is, or did I misunderstand you in saying that?
Through the Chair to, you know, through, through the Chair. Now, what I was saying was, there's a Steering Committee, if you look at that top box, Executive Leadership Team. Really part of that is what we call Steering Committee. That reviews status of, of the project and Commission staff is represented in the Steering Committee. But not, you know, but, but Commission Attorney, your, your Commission Legal Staff. Isn't, has not been, was, did, was not part of the group that looked at this, the mutually agreeable separation language.
Okay, okay, I guess we'll have to wait and see. What documentation or what becomes of the, the settlement once it comes, comes to us? All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, and I will let you know that. Last week, Attorney Johnson and myself did have this presentation presented to us. Prior to today's meeting so that we would know what was gonna be presented. And, you know, unfortunately, and the, the team on the Administration also says unfortunately. The project got to a place where we have to now do this pivot. And we will only pay those funds that we absolutely have to pay, nothing more, hopefully we will be able to get in less. But Attorney Johnson was not part of the Executive Leadership Team or the Steering Committee, if you will. Of this project, she'll guide us on to what we should do with next steps. Commissioner Dobbs is next.
You, Madam Chair, I would like to support Commissioner Anderson's request for an audit on this issue. And to Mr. Newsom, I, I don't know if you can answer this question, but I'm wondering. Who was responsible for heading up this, the, the project prior to you? And who was responsible for reporting the status of, of everything to the Executive Team? I, I know that you have established now the executive leadership of yourself. And giving monthly updates to the Executive Staff and the, the CEO. But who, who was supposed to be doing that before? And was any disciplinary actions taken against those employees? So that's what I'm wondering.
Well, the only thing, through, Madam Chair, through you to Commissioner Dobbs. The only thing I can say is that Rick Kaufman was the executive sponsor. Before I was, I was established as the executive sponsor back, I think in July.
Okay, all right, so I just, I think it would be a good idea for us to do an audit on this. And that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I'm going to call on Commissioners, we haven't spoke yet to go, Commissioner Colleen, the Commissioner Beidou.
Madam Chair, oh, and we're still on this slide. There's been a reference a couple of times to Commission involvement in the Executive Leadership Team, but that does not include our attorney. So I don't, I don't know who that is that's representing the Commission there, but it makes some sort of sense to me. That if the Commission has a person or two on the Executive Leadership Team. That the Commission should, from whoever the individuals are, should be able to get more regular updates. And maybe not as a big agenda item like this. But as the situation changes, it seems our people that are in the Executive Leadership Team. Could be doing more regular reporting to the full board. Just an idea. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, this is Mark Abbo, can I speak?
Absolutely, Mark, go ahead, yes.
Yeah. When, when we first started this project and there was a change in, in our budgeting format, we requested to be part of the ERP team. And our, our biggest concern was, you know, from an accounting perspective and how we were gonna do budgeting. And Mary Carr represented us on this, Mary Carr had mentioned to me that there were some problems. But those problems were never quantified or quantifiable, I mean, every committee has, has issues and we believed that they were working through it. As soon as we became aware of the significance of this problem. We made sure that it was addressed during the budget hearings and, and, and when, when the problem was quantified. And I believe that that is part of the reason for this meeting right here. Is because it was brought forward during the budget hearings, and it was the first time that we really became aware of the significance of, of, of the issues. Regarding the contract with Cherry Road.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Commissioner?
Well, who from the Commission is on the Leadership Team then?
Well, Mary Carr was representing the Commission on that.
Okay, that was the sum total of the Commission involvement in the Executive Leadership Team.
Yes.
You know, cause I do think. Well, it's not up to me to say who's on that team. But it does seem to me that since we have a spot on the Executive Leadership Team. That Ms. Carr, or if it's Mr. Abbo. You know, can report on stuff on a regular basis to the Chair. Of things that are coming up because, you know, we've been hearing for a long time that it's in trouble and it's gonna go $25 million over. This is the kind of, this has been talked about for quite some time now. And so I, I don't know, maybe the depth of it came up in the budget discussions, but I don't think that was a. A total surprise that we're gonna be going over on this. So, so I just think that we have somebody in the room that can give the Chair regular reporting. How often does the Executive Leadership Team meet?
The Steering Committee portion of the Executive Leadership Team meets every other week. And there are reports that are provided to the Steering Committee.
Okay, now you've added another layer. Is the Commission representative on the Executive Leadership Team part of the Steering Committee?
Well, that, that, that's what I'm saying, the, the representation is through the Steering Committee. Which is within the Executive Leadership Team, that's what I'm saying.
So the answer is yes, there is a Commission person at the Executive Leadership Team.
Correct, yes.
So they get updates every two weeks?
Yes.
And, and I think then, I think a little. What do I wanna call it, a little briefing by the Commission person to the Chair of the Commission. After those biweekly meetings, I think would help the information flow. And, and, and the Chair of the Commission can stay on top of it. And better information. Before it all piles up like this and you come in, Mr. Newton with, with Newsom with a, well, let's start the report going back seven years. That we, we can keep it more, and it's an excellent report today, Mr. Newsom. But I think with the, that would help the Commission and Commission leadership to stay more in touch. That the Chair and perhaps the Chair of Ways and Means or whatever other necessary committee. Can get a, a more regular briefing. So, you know, cause the worst thing in the world is surprises. Especially when, in anybody's chair. But in the chair I sit in, you know, that's, you know, you don't want elected officials to be surprised by things. Cause then all sorts of stuff gets said and all sorts of stuff goes out into the media that may or may not be correct, blah, blah, blah. So I'm just looking for a more regular way that Commission leadership is informed as to what's going on at these biweekly meetings. And hopefully that can happen internally for the Commission. So thank, thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner, and just to let you know and all Commissioners know. Mr. Newsom and I have absolutely committed to giving thorough reports every. every month, every six weeks at the Government Operations Committee on the process. So that we are in the loop, uh, in, in, in the loop of everything going forward. So that is commitment that, um, Mr. Newsom and I have agreed upon to make sure that, like I stated, there are no surprises five, six, seven, uh, months, eight months, a year later.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Baydon.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, no need to be repetitive. Commissioner Colleen touched on the area that I was gonna talk about, but, uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, going back to Commissioner, uh, Kala.
Uh, yes, um, you, a quick question. Um, I know you have made a lot of mention as relates to Cherry Road and issues surrounding that company and the removal from this, um, project. Um, the question I have for you is, um, the, uh, is around the current project manager or project, I mean, I'm sorry, program director, I'm sorry, on Mad Dog and, uh, Loretta Roundtree. Um, so there has been a decision to no longer have Mad Dog as part of this, uh, as part of this, uh, uh, project, uh, as, as well as I'm trying to see, um, did she give, uh, or that company give any indication that, uh, that there are some of these problems going on early on? And, and whether or not they were actually heated to. So I'm just trying to see what was, um, Mad Dog's role in all of this based on your early assessment of where things are.
Well, I, I will say, um, say this. I think that, you know, when we missed go-live dates, you know, we were assured, you know, again, you're working, the, with the window to the project is through the PMO, right? So that's the thought process here. Um, we were assured, you know, this reset, that reset, um, will work, um, to get, to get this project complete. Um, but those resets did not, you know, did not come to, you know, did act, didn't actually give us the results we needed. A little bit more background, um, we, originally I showed you a slide where, um, the HCM portion, HCM one A portion was supposed to go live. Um, really previous, it was supposed to go live previous to me joining the county. Then it was supposed to go live, I think in June of twenty twenty. Then it was supposed to go live in July of twenty twenty-one. So as we started to break through all those go-live dates, um, you know, there, I don't, I, me personally, I don't think there was enough of an issue raised um, from the program director to say, hey, you know, we need to, we need to, you know, as early I said, Fisher cut bait, we need to cut bait and cut our losses. I don't think that that direction was given early enough by the program director. Um, once, once we got to a point that the program director made that recommendation, it was way too late. Um, in our, in, you know, administration's opinion. And that is a big reason why, again, we did not terminate the pro, the, the contract with, uh, Mad Dog, but we did let it lapse. We did not.
Okay, I, I got it. Okay. Uh, I'm also, this is the last point, um, you know, new to the commission under learning processes and protocols and procedures. Um, but the jail, there was a lot of issues surrounding the jail. The commission and the executive, uh, depart, executive branch decided to set up, um, the Criminal Justice Center, uh, committee to have more of a regular, uh, consistent update to the commission. And there was a, and there's a path for the entire commission to be able to, um, be brought up to date with those regular reports that we often, um, receive. This project, in my opinion, has reached that level. Um, and that, um, I absolutely would like to probably talk with the chair offline about setting up another committee to actually, I mean, I know more committees. But the point is, is this here is absolutely something that, uh, the commission needs to have a regular, consistent update because, um, I know here has been stated, you just, um, came, um, into the mix as relates to this issue. I love the presentation that you have presented to us, but absolutely, uh, we are, we could continue to look at the executive branch, but there's another branch that's also, um, held, um, responsible, um, for how, um, funds, county funds are being, um, used. And I think that it has now risen to the point that the committee, that the commission, uh, absolutely should, uh, have a, um, a stronger oversight in regards to this, uh, this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I haven't heard from Commissioner Basham, then I'll go to you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Basham.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm paying close attention to this and, and, uh, writing a lot of notes and, and, uh, we will proceed as appropriate and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, one, uh, other question that came to mind, uh, is, uh, Mr. Newsom, how much are we paying, uh, for the continuing contract to cover, uh, to make sure we, our system doesn't fail? Um, and, uh, that's, is that part of the estimate of what you had given us? Uh, would be the continued cost? Or is this, or is that separate?
I'm gonna ask, I don't know if Nev Mabasic or Aaron can answer that question. I don't know if Nev is on the call. I know Aaron is. I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I think we are only paying for ongoing, typical ongoing support plus, uh, license costs, um, which are part of our normal operating budget. So I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I want to make sure we're ca, we're very careful with how we answer that.
I, I think, I think I remember that the commission has already approved another contract with them for two or three years on an as-needed basis, I believe. I think it's got a, uh, but, but just wondered if you could give us the number and if that's part of your estimate of what is, it's going to continue, uh, this project is gonna cost. And if that's because, of course, without the new system in place, we're gonna have to continue paying the support services to keep the old one going. If you have somebody that could answer how much that's gonna cost us.
Through the chair, um, we'll, we'll have to, uh, bring that, that information, uh, forward. Uh, we, we do have, uh, estimates. It's just, I, I don't have access to those at this moment.
If you can provide us with that once you, uh, receive that information and, uh, you know.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clark Coleman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, um, I don't sit on ways and means. Did not know about the budget. This issue was discussed in the budget process. And I guess I'm really surprised to hear, uh, the complexity of what has happened. I, um, would say that I must agree that there needs to be further oversight over a project of this nature. So, um, I, I certainly would, uh, support, uh, there being some sort of a committee or something, or someone from the commission uh, to, uh, serve in that capacity. And be it task force or be it an individual, maybe our budget director. Uh, I hate to name people, but somebody from the commission ought to be, um, have the responsibility of, of oversight of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yep, and I will be discussing this with our government ops chair as well as, um, our fiscal advisor. So thank you for that.
Okay.
Commissioner Haydus.
Thank you. Uh, uh, it's amazing listening to this presentation. And I, my experience in, uh, government for a long time, uh, this issue happened many time and again and again. And yet, this time I've been hearing this presentation, which is good presentation. I, uh, learned a lot from it. Uh, the discussion of my colleague was excellent. Uh, but I didn't hear anything about the involvement of the IT department in those contract. Uh, where their recommendation lie, where, uh, their expertise, uh, and, and to prevent, uh, some of those thing with, uh, some contractor who have a reputation in the past or not. So I, I didn't know if the IT department have any involvement in those, uh, in the process of the, uh, contract. So, uh, if anybody could tell me what's their involvement? How can they use their expertise to give us some guideline? Uh, who we dealing with, uh, sometime? But we, we need to, uh, hear from everybody to be able to have a fair assessment. Lack of oversight, it's a, it's a fatal disease in politics. Uh, so I hope we learn a lesson and try to go in more detail before we award any contact.
Madam, Madam Chair threw, threw you to the commissioner. I, I want to reassure you that, um, our direct, you know, our Department of IT or DO-IT, um, has been involved. Um, they were a part of the original, um, part of the original, um, um, selection committee from looking at the contracts, looking at the RF, you know, developing the RFP, looking at the contracts. Um, the, you know, director of, of DO-IT has always been a part of the executive leadership team. Um, has been, you know, DO-IT has been represented in the steering committee as well. So, um, I want to make sure you want, you, you do know, even though I did not spell out DO-IT in the presentation, our, our Department of IT has definitely been a part of, uh, this project. So we, and we, we definitely rely on their expertise. And one other thing I will say that's important, not only is DO-IT leadership been involved in that executive leadership team box that you see at the top, but, you know, in the, you know, once, you know, the current structure of the project, Nev Mabasic, um, is filling in as the interim, um, pr, uh, program director, um, with support from DCG while we work through, you know, what the permanent PMO is gonna look like as I described before. And, um, you know, she, you know, Nev has been a member of the DO-IT team for, I'm not sure how many years, but she's been a member of the, of the, um, DO-IT team for some time now.
Well, you know, listening to the presentation from the beginning till, till now, I don't know if I mess it, but I didn't hear anything about the IT involvement in it. And that issue raised concern to me because if the decision been made uh, with top level, without the involvement of the expertise of the IT department, then something missing. So, uh, but you mentioned they've been involved. I'll take it, uh, the way you explain it. Uh, but I hope we, uh, uh, never have, uh, the, uh, what we worry from the lack of oversight. And I agree with some of the commissioners remark as we need to be more, uh, inform and, and those type of contract and issue for the commissioner to be able to be comfortable, uh, with those decisions. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Yeah, I'll just ask, uh, one last thing, uh, Mr. Newsom. Thank you for this presentation. What are our next steps? You mentioned that, uh, we would go through a, uh, investigation stage, for lack of a better word, or for the next few months, just to see where we are, assess where we are, decide where we need to do and how we're gonna go forward. Um, can you give us the next, uh, steps for the next three months and then the next three months after that? So for the next first and, uh, second quarter of fiscal year?
My recommendation would be that, you know, if we're looking at a three, a two and a half to three-month assessment, um, that we probably, you, your six-week cadence would get us mid-November, you know, top of November, um, to, you know, which would give you, um, a report out on what the assessment looks like to date. We'll just really be getting ramped up. Then another six weeks will get you into January. We should be, you know, close to, you know, probably at least eighty percent, ninety percent done with the assessment at that point. So, you know, if we go into a six-week cadence and have regular report outs in the GovOps committee, or I'll leave it to you if you want to decide if you want to, um, have us report on a regular basis in GovOps and I can work with Chair Dobbs to get that scheduled. You know, top of November, sec, first half of November and then, you know, first half of January. And continue that cadence, or we can do it through, through dedicated cows, uh, committee of the whole, excuse me. Um, we can do it that route, but, you know, in the meantime, I, I think that's, that would be my recommendation going forward. And also, um, you know, and this is probably more of a commission internal conversation about how the reports get from steering committee to the general body. Um, but that, that, that documentation does exist, that channel does exist. Now, opportunity does exist, so I recommend commission look at that. And then thirdly, you know, I think that, you know, yeah, whether, whether or not the OAG, um, has, is going to look into, um, look into the project in more detail. You know, my office is more than ready to, you know, to cooperate and we'll provide whatever information we need to provide, um, to, you know, to, to help with that investigation should the commission, um, through the proper, you know, through the proper methodology, um, choose to go that route. So those will be the three things I would, I would, I would say need to happen sooner rather than later or agreed upon sooner rather than later.
You are absolutely right. And again, we will, uh, make sure that we have either, um, task force or, um, some mechanism to get regular reports as the status of this project. So we are not here in another year or so. Um, we've been working on this for so long, so much money has been expended. It is extremely unfortunate that we are here today, but we're gonna vow that we're gonna get this right going forward and have a system in place that's not going to, um, exceed the cost that you've now outlined would be our maximum, which would be about fifty-seven million all in. Any particular, uh, any more questions for, for Mr. Newsom, Mr. Wagner? Before we leave this item, this was a presentation item, no action to be done. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you, sir, for your time. Look forward to, uh, continuing to work on this, uh, issue and this project with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item. I want to go to the responsible contracting item next, please.
You're on item number E one, approval of an ordinance by Commissioner Bell to amend chapter one-twenty of the Wayne County Code of Ordinances, the procurement ordinance to add requirements for responsible contractors.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Kinnla.
Madam Chair, um, I'm moved that this be recommended to the full commission for, uh, approval.
Right off the gate, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is Felicia. Um, so this item needs to be, the motion needs to substitute this item. I did send an updated revised version to Commissioners and everyone yesterday. Um, based on discussions with the administration, we did make amendments. So I actually need the motion to be to substitute. And was on the agenda for the item that the clerk may pop up on the screen, but the item that was submitted yesterday, um, with all of the, um, updated information and language.
Madam Chair, um, my, my motion is to, uh, to move and recommend, um, approval to the full, uh, commission uh, for approval of the, uh, recommended, uh, ordinance amendment uh, as stated by the, as presented, uh, to the clerk, the revise, the revisions that were presented to the clerk.
Okay. Thank you. Um, is there support before we go into discussion?
Court.
Okay, thank you. So this, um, is amendment to the procurement. Thank you. This is an amendment to the procurement ordinance as it relates to contracting, um, working with, uh, various unions across the county. The concern was strengthening, um, our process and procedures such that we are making sure that when it comes to construction contracts, that certain things are followed, make sure that, one, that we're given, um, we're making sure that those co, uh, companies in Wayne County, um, are being utilized as best as they can be. Of course, we go through RFP process, but we wanted to make sure that we're strengthening the language and strengthening the process and the procedure. We've been working with the administration on this language as well as I stated, some of the unions to, um, make sure that it's a good fit for all of us. I'm gonna turn it over to, um, our counsel, Felicia Johnson, to go through some of the particulars in this. Then I'm gonna call on Mr. Michael Aaron from Labor's eleven ninety-one to also speak to this. But first, um, Commission Counsel Johnson.
Through the chair, um, as you, as Chair Bell indicated, this is an ordinance that will require bidders to provide additional information to ensure that the work is performed by businesses who can. who can provide high-quality, safe, timely, reliable work, and that they can do so in an effective manner. It's only applicable to construction contracts over a hundred thousand dollars, so will not impact smaller contracts that may be bid on by smaller businesses, as they may not be able to comply with some of the requirements. But it's just additional information that the county will be seeking. And if the clerk can maybe stroll up just a little bit, so we can get an example of what some of that is, additional information, so this section requires that there be a certification. If you can continue to stroll, please. Keep going, keep going, and then you'll see here, you can stop. You can see here, these are some of the specific information that will be requested from vendors. This information will be considered in the bidding process. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I see a hand, Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, Madam Chair, to our Commission Counsel. Felicia, what changes were made from the original and how were those made?
So with, with regards to this particular ordinance, there was a request from the administration, Aaron, to increase the dollar threshold. Initially, we had it at fifty thousand because that was consistent with what other communities were doing. But he indicated that that could impact some of the smaller businesses who bid on some of the smaller projects, such as building ramps, and we didn't want to, you know, phase them out of the ability to get county contracts. So we upped the amount. There was some other information that they wanted, that they thought was either already required somewhere else. So we rearranged the ordinance. I had no issues with this particular ordinance and the revisions that they requested. I believe we made them all, had no issues with the changes they requested for this item.
Okay. Were you involved in the negotiation on this, the changes?
Yes, I directly was involved with the administration with regards to their proposed revisions with this item, yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Morek, I see your hand.
You did, but I took the hand down. Thank you.
Okay. Is Michael Aaron or someone from Laborers Union 1191 on the line?
Hi, everyone. To the Chair, thank you for this time, to the rest of the Commission. Again, thank you for consideration of this line item. My name is Makaya Aaron. I serve as General Counsel for the Laborers Local 1191. I am here speaking to the Commission on behalf of Michael Aaron, who had a meeting. So this is an ordinance that we believe will make it easier for the Commission to do business with contractors who, one, are worker-friendly and who look at the work more as a community, a community-building initiative, and not just doing work in the city and no investment in the city. So what investment does the Commission get with something like this? The investment here is that you get quality work that should outlive the lifespan of the contract. Many times we don't talk about the contract's lifespan. So if work is supposed to last five years, the contractors that would be incentivized to do work under this amendment to the original ordinance would be those who would make sure that the lifespan of the contract is upheld, whether that's five years, three years, whatever the lifespan is, as well as offering quality jobs to Wayne County residents that provide livable, sustainable wages, as well as benefit packages that would include both healthcare and pension opportunities. So really what it does is ensure that upfront contractors who meet this new amended ordinance would be those that will follow all of those guidelines, as well as offer some benefits to the community. So they're going to be hiring people who live in the areas for which the work is being done, and generally who care about community initiatives as well as quality work.
Thank you, Attorney Aaron. Appreciate your comments. Again, this is something that just strengthens what we already do as it comes to procurement for our construction companies, but just a little bit more detailed. And I think that's going to benefit not only the companies that submit bids to us and that we choose, but also the residents of Wayne County moving forward as well. Commissioner Morek, I see your hand.
This is, this is a real one. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm curious what quality work means. I mean, is it recommendations from other projects? What, what does quality work actually mean? To the, to the.
To, and I'll just, before she times in, sometimes unfortunately, and not stating in Wayne County, I guess maybe we can look for our previous conversation. Sometimes we hire contractors and we have the desire and the hope that they would provide work to us based on the scopes, and they tell us information. This, the quality work piece is something that we're going to make sure that they know upfront that that's something that we're going to closely monitor and make sure that they are providing quality work, as opposed to sometimes you get contractors that come in, not necessarily with us, but they'll come in and they'll do shabby work, and in three, four years, we're replacing it. So I think that's the term, what she says, quality work. I don't want to take words out of her mouth, but that's how I interpret that, Ms. Aaron.
Okay. So, so any, any company can bid on these jobs. They don't have to all be unionized, right? That's not part of this.
No.
Okay. Anybody can, any business that meets these qualifications can bid on this, on this job. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really appreciate the Laborers Union for contributing to the meeting today. I was just wondering if we had reached out to any of our other contractors or our unions that we typically contract with to get their feedback or their thoughts on this?
I mostly talked to 1191. I do know, and Ms. Aaron, you can chime in if you were in conversations with other unions in giving us feedback for this ordinance.
Yes, thank you to Commissioner Dob for the question. With regard to other union support, we, we work with both IBW, Local 58 Plumbers, the Plumbers Union, as well as the Operators Local 324. We've all agreed on the, the general principles that go into such ordinance, although the ordinances and how they're drafted are very specific to the individual procurement processes of those municipalities. So while other municipalities and counties have enacted such language, it's going to be different for every municipality based on the current procurement process. So, yes, we've all collaborated on the language, and we all see the need for such, for such a change to the original ordinance. However, to, to go back to another Commissioner's question, it does not, every union contractor is not a responsible contractor. And every non-union contractor is not deemed to be not responsible based on their union affiliation. This has nothing to do with really, union affiliation is really putting workers first and community benefits first. So we have not considered every contractor affiliated with our organization or other organizations that support this language to be responsible based on the general designation of being union affiliated. That is not the case. It will never be the case. But it just simply means that those who offer the correct training that needs to be offered to make sure that the workers who are working on these projects are skilled, offering benefits to workers, as well as making sure that the work lives, outlives. We, we like to think that we like responsible contractors work to outlive the, the contract terms, but that's what's more important, not necessarily affiliation to unions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And a really quick, Council Johnson, because I don't have it in front of me, but the other counties who have enacted similar responsible contracting, I think it was Kent County, Washtenaw, help me.
Oakland, Washtenaw. There are some outstate counties, but Oakland, Washtenaw, Detroit is currently working on one. I believe the union, when we met with them, they indicated that there were several other cities and communities that have also enacted this ordinance. But Washtenaw and Oakland are the counties we're aware of. The larger counties in the city of Detroit, as I understand, is in the process of working on theirs.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional questions, comments on this item? There was a motion and support to move this to full board, as I will say is amended, and the current reiteration that was sent to us late last night. I would do a roll call vote on this, please, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Basham?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dob?
Yes.
Commissioner Addis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kline?
Hi.
Commissioner Kinlaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Badun?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera? Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And our last item, Madam Clerk.
Item number two is approval of an ordinance by Commissioner Bell to amend Chapter 120 of the Wayne County Code of Ordinances, the procurement ordinance to amend Article 1, Division 1, to include the establishment of programs related to the procurement system. Move support.
Is moved by Commissioner Baker McCormick. Is there support?
Support.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Similar to the last item, yesterday morning, I sent a revised version of this. They had some updates in it. So if we can get this to be a substitute for the item that's on the agenda.
Move support for the revised amended motion.
Support.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so this is our last item. There are a few items that have been included in this. Madam Counsel, so if you want to go through the highlights of it at this time?
Yes. So through the Chair, this particular ordinance amends the procurement ordinance in several sections. These revisions extend the delegated authority of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for contracts for five years and extends it to September 30th of 2026. This ordinance also addresses other issues that have been reoccurring with regards to contracts. So just as a little background, last year, over a year ago, the administration requested that the Commission increase delegated authority from fifty thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At that time, the Commission approved that provisionally for one year. At the time that the administration made the request, they indicated that there would be several improvements to inefficiencies to the procurement process and contracting process in the county. And I'll leave the administration to speak to the improvements they've noted, based on the review of Commission staff on, as far as the portion of the process that impacts the Commission. We had not noticed any significant changes. We still have the same error rates and issues that we had prior to the increase in delegated authority. So what this ordinance will seek is additional improvements and efficiencies in the system, so we can continue to work towards, as a county, work towards improving our procurement process and contracting process to make it more efficient. So what this does specifically is it will request that the administration, the CEO, explore and submit recommendations for improvements to that contracting and procurement process, and specifically to consider using standardized contracts and checklists that may help reduce some of the errors that we see on our side from the Commission's perspective. In addition to that, it does address some of the issues that have come up in committee with regards to emergency procurements. We actually added some of the issues and items and agreements that have been made through the committee process in the actual document itself. It has some language to address a concern related to co-ops, and also I'm addressed some concerns related to change orders, just to clarify that, you know, if the contract requires Commission approval, those change orders will also require Commission approval. So that is the summary of what you have before you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Many of these things have been discussed over a few years now, and some things have actually gone into practice, but they have not been solidified in the document. I don't know if Aaron is still here?
I am.
And I'm sorry, Aaron, I did not put you on the spot. I know you had a report that showed some of the efficiencies with the delegated authority. I don't know if you have that document in front of you to share. I do believe it's been at the Government Operations Committee a few times. Do you want to send that to Felicia or Gagnit, or I'm sorry, Felicia Pam or Gagnit to pull up on the screen?
Yes, give me, give me a moment, Chair Bell, and I'll, I'll send it right over.
And as he's doing that, five years was put into place for the extended delegated authority was come back to us this year, and this is extending that for an additional five years. But with that being said, this procurement ordinance is our document. At any time that we feel that this is not going well for us, we certainly have the option to amend it. So this is a five-year put-in, just so that we won't have to keep coming back to this. But the procurement office, Aaron's office, will continue to do reports on showing us how there have been efficiencies in this. But if we feel again that those efficiencies are not measuring up to our expectation, we can certainly change that timeframe. This is a living, breathing documents, as is the budget. So I just want to make that the clarification as we go through to Aaron's presentation. Aaron, are you all set?
Give one second, I'm just sending it over now.
Okay, thank you. We'll take it. So that, while we're waiting, Commissioner Baker McCormick question?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify in this procurement amendment. Did, I thought this was a version that we talked to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Is that the correct version that I'm looking at, or is this different? The corp counsel can probably answer that better.
This is different. We haven't explored and gone down to diversity, inclusion. This had already been in the works for a few weeks now. The piece about the diversity and equity is something that we will explore to see how we can fit that into the procurement ordinance, but that is not in this document. That's going to take some time to go through, to figure out the language that looks like for Wayne County. So not to fear, we're exploring it, but it's not in this current.
Madam Chair, this is the ordinance that we did the first reading a couple of weeks, a week or so ago, the first reading.
Yes, sorry, it is.
Yes, I'll just confirm.
Right, but we, excuse me, we also talked about some other issues that I thought would be rolled into, to this at our last meeting. So I was just trying to clarify if any of that would be discussed today, or either a report from Aaron on our disadvantage businesses, if we had any reports on that today.
No, we do not have any reports on that today, but we can certainly work with Victoria in this, in our department that does the business processes to get some information. And we can have that for an upcoming COW.
Great, thank you.
And Commissioner Anderson, before we get into Aaron's report?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask the same question I asked before of our Commission Counsel. And I know you gave a overview, but the differences between this and the prior version, if you could give us an update on what those differences are? And were you involved in the process in negotiating those differences?
And Commissioner Anderson, since we have this screen up, if you don't mind, you can circle back to that question after we go through. And Commissioner Anderson, uh, since we have this screen up, if you don't mind, um, you can circle back to that question after we go through this.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, um, Aaron.
All right, uh, could you flip to the next page? Um, so I, I, I took a snapshot of a, of a year over year, um, and this is a, a previous presentation. Um, this is the one that I was able to pull up. But uh e- essentially, we have um, in this past year, we've increased the number of contracts that have gone through the system um by twenty percent. Um, a- a- as Felicia touched on, uh, th- there are the same number of uh errors, error rates that are coming through, but that, that doesn't take into account that, that, you know, last year we had seven hundred and twelve contracts go through TCM, this year it's eight hundred and forty. Um, the, the way that we uh broke out the number of contracts as well is through non-proquirements, uh procurement contracts, and then delegated authority. And so, um, you know, non-procurement contracts would be items such as leases, um, uh, grants, those types of things that, that don't necessarily fall under uh the procurement ordinance or have a uh, a procurement tied to it. So, so if we could get, uh, or, yep. Um, a- and last year too, you know, we, we looked at uh several key performance indicators. Uh, one was uh average contract time for uh a, a contract, once it was put into the system to be approved uh all the way through, i- including commission approval. Um, the number of contract returns and the number of retroactive contracts. Um, so last year, we had, it took about a hundred and eleven days on average for a contract to go through the system end to end. Um, uh, we had approximately, at the time, three hundred or three hundred and fifty-two returns. Um, that contract return number also includes items that are not in fact contracts. Some of them are budget adjustments, there's, there's various things, so that's the number of documents that have been returned. Um, one, one item I'd like to do moving forward in the reports is uh to work with Joe to, to really get identified as to what those are, and then take those contract learnings and incorporate them into our TCM trainings moving forward. And then lastly, is, is the retroactive contracts and really trying to, to, to work a, a, a better system um where we, you know, really bring that number down to, to, to zero if possible. Next slide, please. Um, and, and so, um, you know, in taking a look at the system, uh, we, for procurement contracts, we've, we've been able to actually uh glean a, a thirty-one percent reduction um in uh the contract approval time by working smarter and using the technology that we have. Um, what, what we had done uh was to remove uh the sequential approvals, move a lot of the um, those approvals into a review round draft um where it was appropriate, because that contract was still live, that if uh the insurance was insufficient, or the FVP certificate were need to be changed, or um there an issue with the treasurer's office where the, the uh entity had not paid their taxes, it wasn't an approval workflow, um, it still was in draft and we're able to, to change. I- it also allowed for um all the individuals to review the contract as, at the same time as opposed to a sequential time. So, um, you know, that's, that's dropped that average uh down actually to about sixty-three days now, as opposed to the hundred and eleven days. So, so that, that's a, that's, that's a vast improvement in time. Um, in addition to that, we've also implemented monthly training sessions for the contract managers. Um, actually, yesterday, we held one, um, and, and uh PH, or I'm sorry, HR and Business Inclusion, you know, went over things to watch out for with FVP certificates to make sure that, uh, you know, if they were expiring within thirty days of submitting a contract, that we got the FVP updated before it came to commission. Um, looking at the subcontractor forms and making sure that those are completed appropriately. You know, trying to address a lot of the, the issues that, that commission sees over and over again. Um, a- at the time, uh, you know, there was an overall four percent reduction. Uh, if you looked at uh last year to this year in the contract returns, and uh at the time of this report, there was also a two percent reduction in the, in the retroactive contracts. Uh, can we move to the next slide? And so, um, if you look at the numbers, uh, a- again, uh, you know, we've gone from a hundred and eleven days. Um, the, I'm not sure why this version is incorrect, it's actually sixty-three days now on the average contract approval time. Um, you know, a- a- at the time that this report was, was presented, uh, there were two hundred and seventeen returns in the prior year. Uh, this year, there are two nineteen, but that, that's also, uh, if you look at it from a twenty percent increase in volume going through the system, um, you know, it levels out, and then the retroactive contracts, we had fifty-four last year at this time. Um, and this year it was fifty-nine, but again, there's that twenty percent increase um of, of volume going through the system. Um, next slide, please. A- a- and that really uh concludes what um, what the KPIs and how we have been trending. Uh, you know, in working with uh Felicia and having discussions with, with commission staff, um, you know, we're trying to improve the system that we have. Challenges are, um, you know, we do have a, a significant staff reduction than we had prior to COVID. Um, you know, we're trying to bring in standardization, you know, we have been doing regular trainings, and it's, you know, just working incrementally to, to, to uh bring a better product to commission.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, and again, everyone agrees that the procurement document aims to uh provide high efficiency and effectiveness on how we can better get contracts through the system, making sure that they're vetted thoroughly and to be as efficient as we can as a county. And that's what this document um hopes to um achieve by adding the provisions that have been added. And I'll say that, to your question, Commissioner Anderson, Felicia has worked tiresily on this, um, along with the administration. There've been countless meetings with Aaron, um, uh, Corp Counsel, Commission Counsel, even myself, um, to get a document that um we can mostly agree upon. Um, did you, does that answer your question, Commissioner Anderson?
No, I, I did want to hear from uh our legal counsel uh as to uh the highlights of those changes that were made and, and uh if she was involved in the, the changes that took place in.
Counsel?
And I have one more comment afterwards.
Yes, so through the um chair, um, so there were, again, several provisions of the ordinance that were um amended, as I initially indicated. Um, there was, if we can go up just slightly, there was one section that was, um, is being added to the ordinance with regards to um seeking some type of improvements to the procurement and contract process um in seeking recommendations and asking the administration to explore um improvements to that process, including standardization of uh contract documents. And you'll see, we're also asking for a report on that um by September uh, you know, by December fifteenth of twenty twenty-two to, so that the commission can be aware of um the effectiveness and what has improved with regards to the contract portion. And then there are other revisions with regards to um emergency procurements, um, as you see in this section, and if you continue to go down, these are things that um have been addressed in committees, such as um the, the length of um an emergency procurement. And while we don't have a date specific to say, you know, emergency procurements are only for sixty or ninety days, we do indicate um that it should only be to address that immediate emergency situation, you know, the, the imminent situation um only, that should be the time period that these contracts are actually issued for. Um, and additional changes, if you go down, is regarding co-ops, and we're just asking the purchasing director to establish policies and procedures to ensure that contracts are awarded equitably. In committee, there has been some discussion with regards to, um, for example, doing co-ops and where there may be multiple qualified vendors, and how do you select them on those vendors? Do Wayne County vendors get um some type of increased points or consideration over other non-county vendors? So asking the purchasing director to establish a policy with regards to that. Um, there was also some changes in here regarding change orders, just to clarify what change orders are and how they're used, and specifically um to clarify that um a change order can't be used in place of a modification to avoid commission approval. If this body approves a contract, then any change, regardless of what you call it, contract modification, change order, no matter what the title is, that, that modification or amendment requires commission approval. Um, we had some discussions, the administration believes that there are certain situations that should not um have to come back to this body, and they'll explore that and present those particular items if they determine to do so for potential um delegated authority or some type of exemption later. Um, but those exemptions are not considered and included in this document. And again, as already indicated, this increases, or not increases, extends the increased delegated authority of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out, out to September twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, and go ahead.
Madam Chair, I, I just wanted to uh add that, you know, I think earlier, and this is my statement part, uh, earlier, we spent a considerable amount of time uh that should indicate to all of us that uh in, in there seemed to be general agreement that the commission should exercise greater authority, uh, not less. And what we're doing is uh with, if we approve this as it is, uh, it is extending it out for five years for delegated authority for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or, or less. And uh I, I would entertain that uh someone, someone might want to entertain uh reducing that five years to another one year, uh, considering what we're dealing with right now. But anyway, that's my opinion. I'm, I'm not a fan of delegated authority, as I've made it clear years, uh, you know, over the years, uh, that it just o- opens the opportunity for abuse and misuse of uh basically tax dollars and, and awarding contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, any other uh discussion items from commissioners? Okay, we had a motion and support to move this item to full board for next week. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Basham?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dog?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattis?
Yes.
Commissioner Colleen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Morecki?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Varga?
Yes.
Vice Chair Protim Baydun?
Yes.
Vice Chair Palomera?
Yes.
Chair Bell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and uh let me just um again uh thank publicly uh Counsel Felicia Johnson for so much hard work and time um to get these ordinance to us. Worked um very hard and very long, and um the administration as well. But uh Felicia's ours, I want to give her uh my gratitude for working to this, working through this, and working with the administration to get this to us. Um, next item, Madam Clerk.
Such other matters as may be properly submitted before the committee?
Nothing. Next item.
Public comments?
Okay, thank you. We have a public comments uh for one minute on today, and I am hopeful that the public comments will be on the items that we discuss on our agenda or items that are in our purview. Is there anyone on Zoom or on the phone who would like to give public comments at this time? Okay, we can unmute everyone, and then everyone put yourself back on mute.
How much time, Madam?
I'm sorry, one minute. Billy? Schultz?
Um, yes, I um gotta commend you guys today for handling yourselves uh professionally, because in the past the, you guys have not. So, the last meeting with the Health Department and then this meeting, I gotta say you guys are carrying yourselves much better. I do recommend, um, when I was on the meeting, the Zoom meeting with the Michigan's Ed- Michigan State of Education Board meeting, they actually adopted where they um put in their bylaws where they are going to start holding each other accountable for their words that they use against each other. I think we should do that. You guys should also put that in your bylaws, because you guys do re- you guys owe the respect for each other and those, that guests that come on to speak, to have respect for them. I also am looking for, about the mask mandate, for you guys to follow along with the, all the other counties with the new SB eighty-two law that just passed. Um, I actually have three masks from the last three days here that are very disgusting. This one actually has blood on it, because my daughter cut her finger, and it has blood on it. She wore that all day at school. I do have them saved in a bag, and I am going to press charges and file lawsuits if this mandate is not um uplifted.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
And my daughter gets sick. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz, thank you. Anyone else for public comments, please? Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have any emails?
Yes, I have a couple of emails, and they are continuing to come in. This one is from Tamara Olivero. I am a Wayne County resident who is highly concerned that the county will lose essential funding if it does not immediately rescind its emergency order requiring masks in schools. As of eleven fifty-nine PM last night, Marion County rescinded its order. A copy of this press release has been emailed to every commissioner. From the press release, the decisions come Wednesday, on the heels of Governor Whitmer signing the twenty twenty-two state budget to avoid a loss of funding for essential public health services threatened in language included in Senate Bill eighty-two, House Bill four four zero zero. According to the Borla Point language included in these bills, any health department that has issued that has issued an emergency order in attempt to combat COVID-nineteen, including enacting and enforcing an order requiring masks by anyone in a school setting, will be negatively impacted financially. Although Governor Whitmer stated that this language was unconstitutional, Marion County Okay, Madam. The next one is from Melissa Manzac. Dear Wayne County official, I am a Wayne County resident residing in Gross Hill, who is highly concerned that the county will lose essential funding if it does not immediately, okay, this appears to be the exact same.
If they're the exact same, just read off the names, please.
That was from Melissa Manzac. This one is the exact same, Kelly Parecki. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please?
Adjournment. So, most. Hello, excuse me, I would like to make a comment.
Oh, you, oh, go, go ahead, you, you missed the, the call for uh public comments. Go ahead, quickly, please.
I wanted to comment that I've been trying to uh reach someone to get information on how to contact uh Source Blue for bidding, as was in the information that was provided to us, and then also how to uh bid on the package for the county jail, and I never received any feedback. And no one answered my email, and not quite sure how to get that information or how to get on the list to receive the information.
Okay, thank you. Please email the, the, uh, P-Lane@WayneCounty.com.
Elaine@WayneCounty.com?
P is in Paul, Lane, L-A-N-E, at WayneCounty.com.
Thank you, P-Lane@WayneCounty.com.
Yes.
Yes, I did mail him also. I believe that he was the director, uh, and I did mail him also.
Okay, Pamela Lane, P-Lane is Pamela Lane, that's our clerk, and she'll get, that's our clerk, we'll get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, and I already caught, last call for public comments. Um, and I did hear a motion to adjourn and support. All in favor, say aye.
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 Adjourn, and thank you all. Thank you all so much. We'll see you next week.